Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order at five thirty-one P M. I'd like to come on Councilor Pivocorn to read the land development, please.
Uh, yes, we'd like to acknowledge that the Rome Municipality of St. Andrews is located on tree one territory, the initial lands of the Anishinaabe, Cree, O G Cree, Dakota and Denny peoples, and the national homeland of the Red River Mati. Respect the spirit and intent of treaties and treaty making and remain committed to working in partnership with First Nations and U W A T people in the spirit of truth, reconciliation and collaboration.
Thank you. Item three, Dr. The Agenda, motion to drop the agenda as presented or amended. Can I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Doranbaugh, Secondor, Councilor Markey. On favor, carry. We don't have any delegations, management reports. They're all attached. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Yes, Deputy Mayor Doranbaugh?
I'd like to say, uh, that the, um, breakdown for bylaw was really nice. It's good to see that, uh, much more, um, articulated. And, uh, I noticed that, uh, Public Works is looking into Green Team stuff too, so happy to see that as well.
Yes, excellent reporting. Um, I know they're locked like on our agenda. Will they be open to the public when they're after meeting?
They should be.
Is there a reason they're locked?
Yeah, they should be open. If they're not open, then after we will.
Oh, okay. But, thank you. Uh, Councilor Wanderer?
Yeah, I just had a few comments in regards to, uh, some of the reports. Um, one with the, uh, the Warner Road, uh, toilets, I guess, uh, being, uh, by the lake there. I heard a report the other day from ice fishermen that they were all destroyed last weekend.
Sounds awesome, yeah.
I'm wondering if anybody knows about that? Um, or what is going on with that? Uh, also, uh, in regards to the lift stations, uh, the noxious odors, um, I've had some complaints from residents in regards to the one on River Road and number nine highway, uh, in regards to the, uh, noxious odors. And hopefully we can get that under control. I know it said here in the report that it was on the radar, so, uh, I'm hoping that can be taken care of. And that's about it.
All I can add to that, the odor control station, it was, it was later, much later, that it was enrolled, uh, put in at Donald Road. Cause we, that council last year, we were taking, it was a million dollars for the odor control station, but Stan Tech had been dealing with all of that. But it was, there was not to be any odor whatsoever. So I don't know if they're looking into it. That shouldn't be. Unless you know about it?
I don't know it, yeah. Yeah, there shouldn't be any odor. Especially if a million dollars was paid.
That was an additional million. Cause there never was, um, uh, an odor control. We were taken by surprise. I remember that. There was never an odor control station ever in anything at the Donald Road. That was additional after it was passed.
I don't, I don't know what happened. I know that, uh, on the lift stations in, in the partnership with Western Fall Odor Control was always, it's always an issue going from a forest main into a gravity that the, the, uh, the waste will sit in a forest main for up to thirty days. So there's, there's no chance for, uh, uh, for back, bacteria gets killed, the bacteria that kills the smell. And by the time it gets to the lift stations, uh, the smell is really strong. So that's why there's odor control. They visited, uh, three, three odor control, uh, stations that were done by this company and we're working with, uh, the company that that provides the odor control, Manitoba Water Services Board and Stan Tech engineer right now to deal with this. So, uh, we're working on solutions.
Okay, good. Councilor Siker?
I thought I'd also read in here that we need to do something about, remember when we first came to council, we were kept being on the checklist about the pump, one of these stations, and now so that's totally given out and we have to buy a whole new pump? Did I end up read that correctly?
Uh, I'm not sure. I'd have to check, check in with the infrastructure director.
Cause I just thought, I sure hope there's some kind of warranty to it.
Well, I mean, it's, uh, those lift stations have been there uh, at least a couple of years now. I think the warranty is for two years, so.
It was, maybe Counselor Hunt, you can add more detail, but it was with, before this council or right at the beginning after that, there was a fifty-three thousand dollar bill. So that was this council, fifty-three thousand. There was issues with that pumps since they were installed. In my
Yeah, I'm not too, yeah, I'm not too sure what the deal with that was. I thought, I know they tried to go after warranty. I thought there was some electrical problems with the joints and on installation and that. And I'm not sure. And, um, you know, exactly what the, um, warranty was. I know Mr. Hallwick tried to go for warranty on it, but it was also Stan Tech should have been fighting for us on it because they were the designer and, and the one that worked with the contractor to install it. So.
Yeah, and those pumps were replaced, I believe, of major dollar repairs before the fifty-three thousand. They've never worked that whole thing since day one.
I'm, I'm not familiar if it was, uh, before my time, but the, the province in the Manitoba Water Services Board are the project managers for all wastewater and water projects in the province. So the province would have been in charge of that.
Okay, well, as long as somebody's looking after it, because you, Counselor Siker, you're right, it's to replace them.
I, I, I think we paid a few checks on it. It kept coming back stating, well, it did. And then I, I thought the answer was we were going to be reimbursed by warranty, but I never, sorry, I wasn't quick enough to follow up if any reimbursement was ever done.
If I recall correctly, even, uh, previous deputy mayor, Hobie, also had a, an issue with some of these monies that were going out for a pump replacement.
And it was close to a hundred thousand dollars. Yep. But we believe that would be. Um, Kenny, any further?
I, I, I have a, I have a comment on Councilor Wanderers about the toilets at Shelly Beach. So, the, during Christmas, they were pushed over but not destroyed. And then, uh, a week ago, they were destroyed by a pickup truck or a quad. I had a phone call from a gentleman early in the morning saying that that happened. I had sent an email to, uh, Trevor and he forwarded it to Peter, I guess. Um, Manitoba Wildlife Federation partners with us on those toilets and the site and the garbage cans and all, and they put a quite an extensive article out in, on Facebook with a couple of gentlemen, as well as Manitoba Wildlife Federation requesting donations for this. And hopefully the operator will put the toilets back in there, but they're also going to look for some of those barriers like we have at the landfill. Uh, so they can't be touched. Um, I know last year they had a traffic counter on there several weekends and it was over three thousand cars a weekend going down there, uh, every weekend. And they figured that three people per car, so over ten thousand people a weekend, uh, use that spot alone. So hopefully they get some donations through the, through the Facebook and the ask of it. And, um, hopefully, uh, you know, with it being on Facebook, someone will come up and say something of who did it or tried to do it or maybe shame somebody not for it to happen again. But we need to get those barriers, those Jersey barriers that we have in the landfill, so you don't go over the bank, so that doesn't happen again, because it is well-used and, uh, well-used, um, facility and businesses in our area prosper from it, so. Hopefully, they can get it back to operating again fairly soon.
How much like her?
So I, I agree with Counselor Hunt. I, I did hear all of this as well. Somebody gave me a call. Um, it's my understanding, if I'm not correct, uh, the R M's on the hook for the best we could, it's been everything. Did we rent it? Right? That made sense. That was just my own insight.
The R M has insurance, the provider has insurance, so we're still working it out, but I think ultimately it's the R M that rented them. If I, if I rented them for a candidate day or I rented them, you know, for another event, I, I, you know, it's, it's also, uh, the duty of the R M in my opinion, uh, that we, we demonstrate care when, you know, if we rent them. So, yeah, we'll, we'll probably be on, on the hook for them, but we're looking into insurance, uh, from the contractor, the provider and our own insurance.
Counselor Siker?
Also, I, I like Counselor Hunt's idea about barricades. Do we have any? Would anyone know? Would have any?
We don't have any barricades. We would have to purchase some.
How much are they?
Uh, I don't know what they are. We're looking into it. We were looking into it last week. So we're, we're
They're pretty reasonable price. We bought those from the place in the airport industrial park there that has all the trains. That's where the ones in our, in our landfill come from, and they were fairly reasonable priced. Uh, you'd probably only need four of them there, uh, because there's bush on one side and you'd have to protect the front of them and the side of each, of each one. So four bar would be sufficient and they're not a lot of money. I, uh, that's where they come from was the crane place in the industrial park. But I don't think the provider will put them back in there unless something is done to protect it. But I know Manitoba Wildlife Federation is probably working with ourselves and, and the operator as well to get something settled for there, so.
Okay, thank you. Next item, item seven, under new business in memoriam donation policy review. Who? You should speak. Counselor Siker?
Hey, this came up in a meeting a little while ago. Uh, Counselor Hunt said after have money donated. Um, kind of became a bit of a involved term. Number one, this policy is from two thousand and fifteen, and as a new council, I think that we should have all our policies up to date with what we are doing. Number one. Number two, for the thirteen years that I have paid attention to this council, coming as a taxpayer, I have seen this bylaw be used for really different things. I walked away from the meeting with the impression that you all thought that this was something that we did for every council or every staff member that passed away that had worked long-term. That is not the case from what I have served in the last thirteen years. It gets used for different things. Depending on who you are, who you know, and a whole bunch of other fluffy stuff that goes around it. My suggestion at the meeting, and I bring my suggestion to the table again today, is that if this is something that you all truly feel heartfelt about, then I suggest that it be built into our H R policy. And every person that works for the R M full-time twenty-five years would get this. But this picking and choosing, which is what I have watched for thirteen years, is what angers me. And I talked to at least sixty different taxpayers in a general course of conversation. Not one of them agreed with R M using taxpayers' money for this type of a thing. This comes down to, once again, should Mayor Sewell had a surgery, we took our money and we sent her flowers. We did not have the R M pay to send her flowers. Should I die tomorrow, y'all want to feel sorry for me? You collect your money and you make a donation. It's not up to the taxpayers to be paying this stuff. Because who, Councilor Pivocorn deems as a rightful citizen to be entitled to this type of donation may not be someone that Councilor Markey agrees with or vice versa, or Ward one to Ward five, or there's, there's all kinds of dynamics and I, I just find it very pathless and taintless to have this type of a policy active in our bylaws. And I ask that either we move it to an H R policy and it's fair across the board and it's only for staff. And that going forward, if the office or if anybody wants to donate for something, I'm the first one to sign up. But it comes out of everybody's own pocket, not the taxpayer's pocket. I understand your debate at the meeting, uh, Deputy Doranbaugh, but you also have to realize you work for a private company. There's a big difference. You got a bonus, you were entitled to that, that is great. But your company is a private company. Your owner decided to do that for you because you appreciate. This is taxpayers' money. And that's why I, I'm so heartfelt to this. And I have been heartfelt to it for thirteen years.
Thank you. Any other comment? Deputy Mayor Doranbaugh?
Well, uh, as a taxpayer in this R M, I have no problem giving some of my tax dollars to a person who's put those years of, of time in. Um, a firefighter, what if a firefighter died in the line of duty? You've all, you're firefighters. Is there something we want to memorialize for that person? Put it into the South York District Foundation, so it's always there for them. And anyone who doesn't know how the South York District Foundation works, it is a principal amount that's put in. No one touches the principal amount. That principal amount returns dividends and interest. That money is returned back to the community with that person's name attached to it. So as a taxpayer, I have no problem giving to them. And it is a small.
Comments? Well, let's go on.
I have one.
Go ahead.
So, again, like, like Deputy Mayor Doranbaugh said, the, it's the foundation. It's not a donation. It's an investment into our community. Since two thousand and eight, we have donated over, or there has been over three hundred and twenty thousand dollars put into the St. Andrews Fund. In returns, that means probably sixteen to eighteen thousand dollars a year coming back to organizations in the community that, that apply for. So it's an investment. To me, sending flowers to somebody, that's a donation that are going to be dead in a week. This is the donation into the St. Andrews Fund that, that principle never, ever goes away. It's like taking money from your checking account, putting it into your savings account. It grows interest then. And so it grows interest for the community. So it's an investment. And that's what we are. We're, we're tasked to make investments into the, into the municipality, whether it be roads, equipment, buildings, all kinds of stuff. And this is another investment that we can be proud of, of having three hundred and twenty thousand dollars into a fund that, that you take three, you know, like I say, sixteen to eighteen thousand dollars a year off of that fund that goes to, you know, things in our community, uh, groups in our community, whether it be a curling club or, or a playground or a daycare that can apply through the St. Andrews Community Foundation. And to put in honor of someone's name, I think is a great thing. And it goes into an investment. People expect return on their investment from the taxes that they pay. And this is just one of the little things that we can do. So, I think it's, it's good. It can be a member of the community that has done a lot of volunteer work. Uh, it doesn't have to be twenty-five years of service. Like I say, it's an investment into the community. And people expect return on investments. I know we do. I know I do. I put money in the bank. I expect a return on my investment. I want people to work that money smart. And, and this is a smart way of, um, investing money into our community, into our community clubs and into St. Andrews. So I think it's a policy we should continue. And it was talked about the money we have donated to the foundation in the past to be talked about it at uh, budget, budget hearings. And I think we should continue this tradition during the, uh, giving month or giving week that the foundation has in October. So it is an investment into the community that the people have put an investment into the, into the community. So it's the least we can do is honor them with a hundred dollars. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'm not saying it's a bad idea. But maybe I'm not saying it correctly. What I'm saying is it's too loosey-goosey. Yes, should a fireman be part of it? Okay. But wrap it up. Because who I deem is someone important in the municipality may not be who anyone else does. And that's why I'd have to hook up, you know? Make it black and white.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Doranbaugh?
Sorry, I also wanted to speak. Okay. Um, and again, I, I, I understand where you're coming from. What's important or who is important to you may not be important to me. But again, I look at the, the bigger picture. Where's that investment going? And this is what I, I'm trying to get across is that this isn't just the amount of money that's all of a sudden, you know, I give Council Markey a hundred bucks and it's gone. No, that hundred dollars turns into whatever. And then it becomes something for the community club or soccer balls or baseball or whatever. So the investment comes back to the community.
Counselor Siker?
I understand that one's understand. I agree with that. What I don't agree with is the lucidness of who gets to pull a name out of the hat to guess. I, I get that. I get it. I am not saying it's not a nice thing to do. I just would like to see it brought into this year and some parameters put around it as to who gets it.
And what type of parameters are you looking to have put onto this policy?
That could have been like the last one we just did. I'm all for that. Firefighters, if someone dies in the line of duty, of course, the R M is going to step up and do that. That makes sense. Um, if you have volunteers that have been volunteering for twenty-five years, let's build it up. I'm okay with the idea and I like where the money go. I just don't like this open-ended
Well, basically, I think what you're trying to say, if you, if like a, if you know somebody on council and you get annoyed, that's what it's been in the past. And I think that's what Counselor Siker is trying to say. I mean, we have, we as a council are responsible for taxpayer dollars. The Community Foundation, at one point, we were donating for the week of giving ten thousand dollars. That went on. That's going to be coming back again. We can't, and to me, I've talked to other mayors over the years. We're the only R M in this entire area that does something like this. One R M, they just had an elderly person who volunteered for years in the community. No compensation for anything. The council member staff, they was well-known. They've used their personal money to donate. And I think that's how this should be. I don't, I, I've always had an issue with this because it's pick and choose. And it's always been, if you know somebody on council, you get the money. And it was for wives. It was, we're using taxpayer dollar. And we have to be responsible for that money. And also, we're the only ones in the entire area that do anything like this. And while I look now, it started in twenty-fourteen. And I mean, we, it, it, I understand Deputy Mayor Doranbaugh, I understand all your comments. It's going to an excellent cause. But then, so then, are we, for budget discussions, we're going to be discussing again, are we going to give ten thousand? We have five thousand? What are we going to do for that? We can't be donating because that goes into the St. Andrews Fund. Also, when someone passes away, it'll say donate to the heart stroke or donate to the South York District Community Foundation. If it's one of our residents. Well, their friends and family will donate to the St. Andrews Fund. Then council on top of that is donating, even though it's a small amount, they all add up. We're donating a hundred dollars on their name. So that taxpayer is being deemed twice. And like, this is why no one else has ever done in this area. And I, I'm having real, I, I will, actually, I'll say it. I won't be supporting this. Uh, oh, Counselor Hunt?
So, I, I don't like it being called a donation. It's an investment into the community. And we should be proud that we are leaders in this. Why do we have to sit back and, and worry about what someone else did? We should be be proud that we're leaders and our, and our residents should be proud that we are doing this, that we are investing money into the community. And it's not a donation. That money is not gone. And, and I just think it's a great thing. And the airport has their own airport foundation now that, that goes towards scholarships and bursaries for people that want to get into that industry. Um, there's all kinds of people that start up their own fund because of, of what they believe in. And, and we should believe in the, in the volunteers that we have in our community and the, the community clubs and whatever else that can take advantage of, like, people should do some research of what the foundation does for it and what the, what the St. Andrews Funds do and where the funds have gone since, since it started giving. Uh, you know, the fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars a year from the interest. Interest makes at least five thousand dollars off of a hundred thousand dollars. So that's fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars easily. So, we should get a report of where that money has gone, who has applied for it and who it's helped out. So that's an investment that doesn't have to come from the tax dollar budget each year. That money is growing on itself and that's the investment. So it's not a donation. It's an investment. And any resident that I've talked to is proud that we do that. And as far as who we pick and, and choose, I think we're all smart and we're all members of the community. And we're going to bring someone that we feel in our heart that is well-deserving of the investment into the community, not a donation.
Uh, Counselor Hunt, if I may. I mean, yes, it's a sad time for funeral. We want to make, why, if I could ask you the question, why are you not supportive of this if you use your own personal money?
I do use my own personal money to donate to other funds within this, within the foundation. And again, my tax dollars go towards an investment into the municipality. So that's the investment. So I donate to other funds within the foundation, probably over a thousand dollars this year into the foundation in different funds that support the community. So, I put my money where, I put my money where my mouth is. Thank you.
Well, we only have the one fund, the same that we only have one St. Andrew, our St. Andrews Fund. So you, you're investing into other communities as well?
I didn't say communities. I said other funds that are within our community. There is one that Counselor Pivocorn and I went to the church in Clandebur that started up a fund. I donate to that one. There's our card club, our local card club in St. Andrews that started up our fund. Our airport has a fund. All goes towards scholarships or to building the community, building the, the fund within itself. So bursaries and scholarships. We give a scholarship away every year to the schools. And that's taxpayers' dollars. And that's good. That's a good investment in, in, into the people, young people coming up. But if we can have a fund that that investment comes off every year without any more coming, going, any money going into it, that's an investment. That's good for the community. That's smart, smart use of tax dollars.
Counselor Siker?
Hey, again, I'm not debating the donation to the R M South York District. What I want to see, what I'm proposing is that we close this up a little bit as to who will be considered to be eligible for. I don't know how else, like, obviously, I'm not saying this correctly. But I am not comfortable with the loosey-gooseyness of you get to bring somebody, you get to bring, like, no. And I don't think that that is fair to the taxpayers. Because there are people that none of us even know. They do all kinds of work in their area, their streets, their stuff, for all their neighbors and all the rest of it. Those little neighborhoods, they would, if something happened to that one person, they would want this done for that person because that's their hero. Isn't anybody we all know about? We don't live on that area. That's why I'm saying that it, it's a wonderful concept. We'll put the money to it. Just tighten it up as to who qualifies for it.
Counselor Markey?
Yeah. Are you suggesting that we have some sort of ticky, ticky box system, uh, for each individual? And what we do is we review it and if they check all the boxes, then we make a donation.
Well, there should be criteria, I believe.
Criteria, well, that's, that's another word you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Doranbaugh?
Oh, I was gonna, we'll tell some people. Um, I, I, I know what you're saying, Counselor Siker, and I, I agree, but there's maybe a little bit too much open for everyone's interpretation of who would qualify. But I think if we just did any, any employee that's done twenty-five years or an employee that passes away, um, that would fall into this. We do a volunteer appreciation, whether it's a dinner or certain other things within the R M that I think would cover off maybe the volunteer aspect of it. And if we just did twenty-five years or somebody that passes away during employment qualifies for this. And
And the fireplace, right? I would, I would put the fire department in, I think.
Well, the part of, the, the, they are employees of the R M, so they would, yeah.
Yeah.
My last comment. So, uh, again, it's the investment in the community, right? So it's the investment that comes from this money. Uh, we have no problem giving a hundred dollar South York Biz Cards to employees of the R M here, and I am all for that as well. Um, so a hundred dollars to giving it to a, a, a foundation is, in my opinion, it is, it is a no-brainer for me. I can find I can find sixty people easily who we have no problem spending their half a cent. To uh to support this and just like you can find sixty people who aren't against it, so. I I'm willing to find a balance on this. If we have to fine-tune this a little bit to make it work, then I'm okay with it. I just don't want it to go away.
Counselor Slicker?
I don't want, I'm okay with it not going away. Just that, I think you, thank you, you just said exactly what I was trying to say. If you've been here twenty-five years or more and as of, you know, twenty twenty-four and and you pass away, by all means, we'll make this. And it will go to the foundation. All for the foundation. That includes, as you say, or if someone dies. While they're employed or whatever, that hundred dollars goes. That updates the uh whatever this thing is called. The bylaw and it just closes it up a little bit.
Counselor Hunt?
Well, first of all, twenty-five years, I think, is ridiculous because what's the difference if people have been there, a person has been there for five, ten or fifteen years or whatever. Um the thing is, I agree with looking at the parameters of it. And let's accept this as information right now and I would. Ask people to do some research on what the foundation does and also let's get a report from the foundation of the money that has been. Uh invested in the fund since it started and where that money has gone and 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 which communities have. Community clubs have prospered from our from our smart investment into the fund. And then come back and look at the, look at this and come up with some ideas of how we move forward with this. But let's be proud of ourselves for bringing this forward, bringing the our St. Andrews Fund forward, actually, and and growing it, so. That's my opinion for now and like I say, let's look into this further.
Counselor Hunt, we all received, it went around the council not long ago, Counsel, it's like, but we've received the breakdown of all the money. Where, who got all the grants? It's in their glossy magazine newsletter they put out. Counselor Slicker?
Once again. I don't think we need to table it. All we need to do, I'm all for it. We just need to state that this is for active staff. Death upon a staff member or death for a staff member. Something, that's only little line that we need to put in here. Hey, that's the part about it will be brought forward by a councillor. Blah blah, and it gets put in there, all staff as of twenty twenty-four. Whom who passed away, this will be done. That way, the foundation's still getting its money, in the RM's package. And it's just tightened up a little bit.
Counselor Mondar?
Um it does say in the in the beginning, no, uh local residents as well as. The people that work at the RM, so. Uh do you want to take the local residents out?
I think um the deputy CEO is very good at this. She can do a draft. We don't have to reaction. She gets the gist. Um I I I agree because I mean, we have a number of. There, all our residents are wonderful that pass away. I mean, to be fair. The way it's written, it does need some criteria to be met because otherwise, why aren't we donating a hundred dollars for every St. Andrews resident that passes away? If you want to be fair, are you? So Lisa, thank you. Could just be a draft and we can look at it for the next, even the next meeting. Thank you. Twenty twenty-four border revision dates. Um it's November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, and there's the attached schedule, timelines for everything. Did you want us to pick uh who's sitting on the border revision tonight? Or this is just for information?
This is just for information.
Thank you. Um. Selkirk Community District Foundation Support Request for the Gainer Library. Again, I believe this is just for information at this point or it would go forward for budget?
Yes.
There's really no money asked in there, I couldn't. Okay, thank you. Next item in camera, we have Len Moore finding present. We have a motion that council move in camera at six oh five PM. To discuss matters that are in preliminary status and respecting which discussion in public could prejudice municipality's ability. To carry out its activities or negotiations as well as legal and personnel issues. And we had further resolved that the members of council agree to keep in confidence a matter that is discussed in a meeting. That is close to the public under subsection one fifty-two-three. And that the committee decides to keep confidential until the matter is discussed at a meeting of the council or. Of a committee conducted in public. Could I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Dornbus, seconded by Counselor Slicker, on favor. Carried.